Hello and welcome to the school board work session for December 7. We are here tonight for the superintendent's search and we have our consultants Hank from Human Capital Enterprise with us tonight. Before we get into it, we'll take a quick roll call of the board members. So board members just answer with here or present. Zone one Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Zone two Karen Perez.
Vicente.
Zone three Eric Simpson.
Here.
Zone four Sunita Guard.
Here.
Zone five Ugana Enanyaya.
Present.
Zone six Becky Timchuck.
Here.
And zone seven Tom Colette, I am here. So tonight we are going to be taking a look at the results of a lot of community outreach, either through focus groups or through surveys. And I just want to start with a big thank you to our communications team and community involvement team. They did a huge lift for us by going out and working with focus groups on over 40 different folks. We put out an initial survey. We took some community input on that survey and actually revised and sent out a second survey and an amendment survey to folks. And we really appreciate all the work that our staff did and Hank that you and your folks did to produce these documents. I would just have to say, taking a look at some of these documents over the weekends, these are some of the the most thorough documents I've seen kind of on a state of the district in my time on the board. So I really, really appreciate that. Tonight's focus is going to be preparing us to go out and post for the superintendent position. So at the end of the night, we'll have talked about a number of issues, but we will have cemented the superintendent profile that we're looking for. And Hank will then be able to go out with that profile and begin our search, which is great because we are hoping to get out there and begin our search early. While there are lots of folks who are looking at it and we know that the winter break time is often a great time for folks who are looking at applying to jobs because they have a little bit of extra time to get their resumes together, submit their materials. And so we are doing great on our timeline. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Hank and we look forward to going through the agenda tonight with you.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Tom. And hello, board. And really great to be with you this evening. And before we get started, just delighted to have my team with me. So Kathleen, enjoy wave or say hello. And we really appreciate your comments, Tom, about the the work that you see in in your packet tonight. And we spent a controlled amount of time getting that ready. So I think we all feel really good when we hear those those words. I will also say that, you know, one of the, one of the, I mean, we do superintendent searches in many districts. It is particularly joyful to work in a school district where there's so much pride in district. And Beaverton is that, you know, every district has challenges. Beaverton has challenges as well. But it's, it's oftentimes, we should say differently, it's, it's not always that we hear such auditory comments about the entirety of a district from so many stakeholders. More often we hear, we really love our school, but what's going on in the central office? And we don't, we hear it just a tremendous sense of pride in your organization. So kudos to all of you for the work that you've done to, to make that the district what it is. And others who are watching tonight and others who roll up their sleeves every day to come to work in Beaverton or to go to school in Beaverton or to raise great kids who go to school in Beaverton. It's, it's, it's a pretty wonderful place. I think we can say as outsiders and I want you to know that. We are on the cusp of really starting the recruiting, which we'd like to do in just about a week. So as, as your board chair stated, there's some, there's some pieces of work to just sort of go over with you board tonight to make sure that we are marching, doing the march orders that we need to do to serve you properly. And let's start, if you will, with the timeline. David, if you could pull that up, that would be great. This is not a new document. It's a, it's a little bit of a cleaned up document. I think the last version you saw might have had some scratch marks through it. But this is, this is it. There's one question I'm going to ask where we get to the bottom, but I want to, I want to do two things. I want to walk you through it, not in the level of detail that I did last time, because last time I was really, maybe for some of you sharing what the search looks like the first time. I want to just rather quickly go through this and I hope you have your online calendars somewhere handy to make sure that these are dates that you have in your, on your calendar. I know Diana has invited you, I think, to all of these already. So December 9th, 7th is tonight. It's 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And there's a possibility we might set you free before 9:00 PM. I'm just saying that's a possibility. So after tonight, we'd like to get started with the recruitment. And so our intended date is December 15th. That's when we would go live, we would post the job, we would get the advertisements out, we would send out our listserv and we would, we would start our phone calls to the network and to the network of networks to start enticing folks. And as Tom said, winter break is actually not a bad time to, to start doing some of that work. January 31st to February 2nd is when my team is conducting preliminary interviews. That's just a few days after the recruitment window closes. And board members, you may or may not have this in your calendar, but on between February 2nd and 7th, that is when you will have access to all the applications. You'll also have access to the ancillary materials that will be producing during that time. So you want to just make sure you've blocked out on your own. This isn't a board meeting. This is your own private time. I like to say eight hours. I think that's a good amount of time. You know how fast you read, so you can, you can amend that number as you will, but we want to, we want to make sure that you have read all those materials by the time we get to the slate meeting on February 9. It says, it says the board members read applications February 2nd to 7th. But the truth is you could actually have a day or two beyond that because you need to, the key point is being ready February 9th at 6:00 PM. And I'm hoping that you all have that on your, on your agenda as well. 6:00 to 8:30 PM is a little, it looks like it's a little bit more than 120 minutes. So let's call that 150 minutes. And at the end of that meeting on the 9th, the board will have decided who are the candidates that they want to bring forward for interviews. I think you all have on your calendar that February 12th is a day we're going to spend a lot of time together. That is 7:30 AM to 8 o'clock PM. That timeframe might be adjusted slightly depending on the number of interviewees, but it's not going to be adjusted a whole lot. So plan on having coffee with us and maybe having a bite dinner. And those will be virtual. So you're getting your own coffee and you're getting your own dinner, but we can, we can eat together anyway. After February 12th, at the end of that day, you will determine which of the candidates that you've interviewed are the candidates that you want to bring back for final interviews. And those, the board selected three days. And so those timeframes also should be on your calendar. In all likelihood, this is presuming we have three finalists and there's no guarantee. We might have two, we might have four. Let's just say we have three. Then it would be most likely we would do one on the Friday time, one on the Saturday time, one on the Sunday time. If we end up with four finalists, it's a little clunkier and we'll, we'll, we'll squeeze those four interviews into three days. If we only have two finalists, we would probably just use Friday and Saturday. So if we have three or if we have four, we're going to be using Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And so moving down to the next piece, this is not a date that has been run by you yet. And I just want to check in with you board members. If you, let's just say we do three interviews on the fourth, fifth and sixth, and you are gonna, those are high energy, long days and it's your weekend also. It's best if you are not making your final decision at the end of the long third day. So if it is possible, and I know this schedule may or may not be doable. So I just want to ask if the board could also set aside Monday, March 7th in the morning for a couple of hours. If you think you can, I think we should schedule that as an executive session. If, if there's a member of the board or more than one member of the board that says that's just not doable, then we will, we will make it work within those three dates above, if that makes sense. So I don't need to go hunting for some other time. If we think we can do Monday, 7:30, Monday, March 7th, 7:30, 9:30 and let's do that. If we can't, we will just weave it into the Friday, Saturday, Sunday schedule. Are there any board members that would not be able to make a Monday, March 7th, 7:30 meeting?
Hank, is there an option for a Monday evening meeting for folks as an alternate?
Certainly could be. Yeah.
Ugana, would that help? So if we did something like at 5:30 or 6:00 on Monday? Okay.
I can't see Ugana, but was that, sorry?
Yeah. Yeah. She nodded yes.
Okay.
Would that work for other board members or would that pose a problem for somebody else? Susan, is that okay?
I'm just thinking it's hard to know at this point, but I'm going to say yes. It's fine.
Okay. So let's do that. March 7th, starting at, did you say 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM time?
Let's go 6:00 PM to give everybody a little bit of transit time from work.
Okay. We'll hold that as a time. We may or may not need it, but we'll hold it as a time. So thank you. And that's pretty much our timeline. After that, we go into, you know, you finish that. That's okay. No, you're, you're fine. After, after that meeting, we really go into the end game. It's, it's, we're going to anticipate that the end of that meeting on Monday, the 7th, the board is landing somewhere. And then there's, there's pieces of work to be done, but we don't need to necessarily schedule those. We would hope and expect by mid-March that there would be a public announcement, naming the new superintendent who would start in July 1. Any questions on that? All right. So shall we move to the next topic? Okay. So if, if David, if you could pull up attachment B, which is the community stakeholder interviews. So so when we talk about the final interviews and those are the days that I just shared with you, March 4th, 5th and 6th, and the board is interviewing finalists. One of the key pieces that you'll be thinking about is, I want to dial back a little bit. Let's start it this way. We have, I'm sorry, David, can you pull that, can you pull that calendar back up again? I apologize. Thank you. This is why David cheering not me because that would have taken me a good 40 seconds. If you look down at the board semifinalist interviews toward the bottom of the screen where you see Saturday, February 12th, 7:30 to 8 o'clock PM. And as I said, at the end of that day, the board will identify whom to move forward to those final interviews on March 4th, 5th and 6th. But something else is happening also. The candidates are not only going to be meeting with you on the 4th, 5th and 6th, they're also going to be engaging with a small group, small in number group of community stakeholders who will also be interviewing the candidates prior to your interviews on March 4th, 5th and 6th. The purpose of those interviews with community stakeholders is to allow non-board members the opportunity to also vet the candidates and to provide you, board members, with their feedback. So you're still in charge of the decision, but you're being informed by a group of people that have spent an hour, hour and a half with each candidate and have opinions to share with you. The stakeholders have a very specific job. Their job is not to tell you who they want you to hire. Their job is to provide you their impressions, their feedback on each candidate. You're going to use that feedback when you interview those candidates on the 4th, 5th and 6th. Those interviews that you have with the candidates on the 4th, 5th and 6th are not scripted. I'm not coming into those interviews with a list of questions you're going to ask. I will do that when you meet them for the first time on the 12th, but on the second time you meet them, it's a much more organic conversation you're having with the candidates. And you're deciding what you want to ask the candidates. And one of the key inputs for you to use to decide what you want to ask the candidate is the feedback that you've received from this confidential group of community stakeholders. I want to pause and just make sure that made sense and that I was reasonably coherent. Is there anybody that wants me to repeat any of what I just said about the community stakeholders?
This is Karen. One of the things I also noticed is some of the feedback that we got from the surveys, there's actually some good questions that I see that could come out of that as well. So I think it's going to be a common, for me,
Yep.
it would be a combination of some of that input as well as from the community. I wouldn't want the community to think that we're not listening to the surveys and the other stakeholder pieces that we've had too. So I just wanted to state that.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. Yep.
Hank, I want to know who, who picks those community members and how many?
Yep, we're going to talk about that. And thanks Becky. Great question. In fact, let's talk about it now. So David, thank you. If you could pull up that document you had before, the community stakeholders. What I'm presenting to you is a draft, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm not presenting you a final decision. It's not, it's not my decision. It's yours. But I wanted to show a template of what it could look like and then talk about Becky's question, which is who decides? So David, if you could lower that just a little bit to the bottom, I believe there's 14, we're going to call these roles. Okay. Now I'm presenting a template. These, I'm going to presume your role, the roles you end up will look something like this, but it might not be this exact list. And tonight is not really the night that we need to decide that you need to decide exactly who the 14. And if we need 16, we can go a little bit higher. But we want to, we want a small enough group that it's contained, that we can all see each other on a Zoom meeting. And so let's just for a moment, even though you've heard me say this is not exactly the list that you would necessarily pick, let's just hypothesize and say it is for the moment. So my recommendation is that the board creates the board direct staff. Usually I will work with either the communications department or Diana or David. Oftentimes it's communication. So Shelley, this might likely fall into your arena. There would basically be the equivalent of virtual buckets for each of these 14 roles. So if I'm in elementary school and we would announce to the public and to the internal stakeholders, here's an opportunity for you. If you would like to be one of the select group of community stakeholders, number one, you have to commit to total confidentiality. Number two, you have to be able to attend on a certain, whatever date we choose. And if you are interested in both of those things and are willing to abide by the confidentiality. And Susan, I see you have, I think there's a couple of hands up. So I'm going to grab those in a second. Then you get to put your name into one of these buckets. And I recommend it be done by lottery. There's another way to do that where it's an appointment. We'll talk about that in a minute. But I think the fairest, safest, easiest and most transparent ways to do it through a lottery. Susan, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my question is, and doing it by a lottery, my takeaway is the diversity aspect of that. And that concerns me.
Yes, that's fair and reasonable.
So
Yeah.
Maybe there's another way of doing it. So, or maybe some of it's by lottery and some of it we look at another way of doing it. So we make sure that there's diversity there.
You raise a really good point. So let me talk about two other options. And maybe there are some other options that I haven't thought of that I'd love to hear. So I did work in one district where there was a slot that was identified for bilingual. I think it was specifically a bilingual Latino parent. So we could pursue something like that. I want to make sure that we have eyes aboard and not cross any lines that we shouldn't cross in terms of, you know, how we legally do this. But I certainly have had experience where that's been done and that might be a way to do that. There's also the appointment. So I just want to, although I'm not recommending it, I just want to walk you through what it would mean if you appointed. If you appointed, rather than having the lottery, you would actually solicit applications from people that were interested in each of these buckets. Not a, you know, not a gigantic application with lots of essays, but an application where they would indicate who they are and maybe write a short three or four sentence blurb about why they're interested or what they've done. And then the board would either themselves an open session or select a subcommittee would you know, select based on applications. So it's doable. You would want to be really clear about your rubric. If you were doing it as a group, you would of course have to do it in an open session. I've worked with boards that have done both. I, for the board that actually did an open session meeting that was a reading of the applications and decisions in public space. So there are ways to do that. It's obviously a lot more legwork on the board side if you're going to do it by appointment. So that's another option. But then there was the option I just mentioned where you might actually specify certain roles based on demographics. And I'd be curious what, you know, I'd love to hear what other board members think about that.
Hank, what I'm wondering here is if you could work with community involvement and maybe David on the, on the compliance side to come up with a proposal because I think in terms of the board's schedule, it would be very hard to get another meeting in to be able to do the appointment process like you're describing. But I think we need something that includes an element of diversity to make sure that we have that diversity on that group. And I'm wondering if that's a proposal that you could take back to the board after kind of working with staff. And then we could take another look at it and either green light it or give you some suggestions.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. And we do have time. So this is, you know, these folks are not going to convene until at least the end of February. So there is, there's time to do that. And I'm happy to work with, with David and Shelley and their teams. Karen?
Um, I'm thinking about like our, the makeup of our student population. If there's some way to percentage wise, make sure that it kind of matches how our lottery system somehow could provide some of that makeup of our student population. And I also was thinking of all the different groups that we actually interviewed and that makeup of all those and the diversity. Doesn't quite, you know, I know we don't want a large group because then it's hard to get all the input, but I'm just trying to think about all the groups that we were, we, we, we listened to already and how that doesn't necessarily align with this. And I only see two student voices. And on the responses we got from the other documents we'll talk about today, there was a high need for student voice to be a key and centered in the new superintendent's work. And I see two student voices in this one. So and high adult voice, just some wonderings and noticing.
Thank you. Sanya?
Yeah, well, that was my question. Is it just two or is it like a student from elementary school? Like each one is one? Is that what, like 14, yeah, 14 groups? So from each group, you're just selecting one person. Is that it from the lottery? Is that what this is proposing, right?
Yes, this, this proposes 14 human beings representing.
Okay. Okay. And, and, and did you say we could do hybrid? Like some lottery and some appointment, we could do that, something like that?
Yeah, you sure could. In fact, if you, you notice they're actually on this template, there's one that's not a lottery, which is number 13. So yes, you can ultimately decide which, which are lottery and if there are some that are appointed, for sure you can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hank, this is a small observation, but if we go with labor representatives, we'll need two. And I think that's important to have that voice. So one for our classified employee union and then one for our certified employee union.
Yeah. So, and as you see, 14 is not a lot, right? Because there's, there's, there's going to be high interest. And so, so well, it makes sense. If I'm very comfortable working with, with the staff to figure out what's the best way to make sure that we are truly representative of the community, recognizing that it's only going to be a small number ultimately that are going to sit on the panel.
I'm wondering, and then maybe this is not okay, but if the slot for one of the labor representate, representative from the teachers' union could be a middle school or a high school or even in an elementary, I mean, to represent a teacher in that regard. I don't know if that makes sense. I'm just bringing it up. If we want to have a representation from the union, but we want to save slots, maybe that's a way of doing it.
Others?
I guess we could take that slot seven and make it another student instead of adding another parent or community member. That slot seven could be another student. That would just be one.
Becky?
Um, so again, the outcome of this, are they going to vote as a group? Does each person have one vote? Are they going to rank these folks? Are they going to just be writing a list of adjectives of what are characteristics that they like? What, what do we see the outcome of this work?
Great, great question. So what we would typically do is at the end of the, so this group of 14, whoever they are, interviews candidate A. At the end of the interview, we engage in two different kinds of debrief process. The first one is a collective. So as a group, we ask a couple of, really just a couple of pointed questions to gain their impressions of the candidates and they engage with each other. So the consultant's sitting here facilitating and taking notes, but the group as a whole is engaging with each other on really this question is this, does this candidate strike you as having the propensity to be, the propensity to be a great superintendent for Beaverton? We give them a couple of leads, but basically that's the conversation. We take notes. You will see those notes, board members, and that's what we call the collective feedback. We're going to see the highlights of what people are calling out and talking about as they discuss this candidate's propensity to be great. Then, when they're done with that, they will complete a pretty simple survey monkey where they will answer individually some questions about how they, how they perceive, right? Because not every voice always gets elevated in a group of 14 people. So you, board members, when you convene to meet candidate A for the second time, right? Because you've already met them once before when you determined that you wanted to move them forward. When you meet them for a second time, we'll actually spend about 45 minutes where you are using all this data that has been collected on the candidates, including the collective feedback and the individual survey feedback. That's going to inform you as to how people have seen this candidate and also what are some questions or what are some issues you want to zero in on when you now are spending the second interview, which is a longer interview. It's about a two hour interview with a candidate. You'll be building, that's sort of, it will, will inform the input. Did I answer that question, Becky? Yeah, okay. Karen, did you have a question? No. Okay. So I'm, if we're good to move on, I think my next steps are to connect with David, to connect with Shelley and to come back to you, which we can do in January, which is still plenty of time with a proposal. And then we'll, assuming it's good with the board, we'll operationalize that.
Hank, I think you gotta know how to handle.
I'm sorry. I don't have Uganda on my screen. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on with my screen. I'm trying to have a big screen so I can use all the buttons, but I can't. I apologize for that. So my question is, Hank, are we capped at 14? Is it, would it be too, too much to have a 15 person? Because I totally agree with Karen, we should at least have three students, you know, voices represented here. So I'm wondering if it's possible to add maybe one more person, one more student. Is that, is that too much? Is 15 people?
No, I think 15 and I'll, I mean, I'll even say, I think 16 is okay. Now, once you get beyond 16, it, we could do more than 16 too. You, you, we really need to have multiple consultants because more than 16 is really too big in a room. So we're happy to do that. But I would say that at some point, there's economies of scale. And so, you know, I don't necessarily think you're going to get a whole lot more out of 100 people interviewing than you are out of 16, but I would say 16 per group is probably as far as I would, would want to get. It's more than 16. I would want to bring in a, a second facilitator.
Okay, thank you.
Sanya?
Yeah. So when you say a licensed employee from elementary, middle or high school, are you talking, are they educators or they can be anyone?
So this is, remember, this is just a template. So in this template license would be defined as anybody who is like, So this is remember, this is just a template. So in this template, license would be defined as anybody who is like you know, certificated. So whether it's a teacher or a school counselor, maybe a nurse, depending on how you identify. So right, so we've got our license. I use I use the word license interchangeably with certificate and then classified. So I think of sort of the workforce, most of the workforce falling into those two categories. And then you've got some administrators, supervisors and some confidential staff.
So Hank, I think we'll look forward to a proposal from you on on diversity and what the makeup of the group might look like.
Yeah. We can do that.
So so again, can I just I and I don't want to get, but I think this is going to be really important for communicate when we're looking at people who want to do this to really be because I know we've done this with like boundary committee and bond, you know. Will all of these people, all fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, these people see all of the candidates on that one given night?
Yes.
So we're really asking anyone that applies for this of just one night of their time.
Yes, I think I would extend it to day because it might not all squeeze into an evening. So it's probably a full day.
So that's going to make a real difference to people that apply to understand what we are expecting of them. Because there's a I'm sure there's a lot of people that are interested. But it won't do us any good to have them go in the lottery and pick them and then find out that they this does not meet their.
Yeah, absolutely right. We are very clear on on the I'm going to call it an application, even if it's a lottery. So let's call it a lottery ticket. But I'm very clear on exactly what the time commitment is, what the confidentiality rules are.
But is it going to say exactly what date is that you're looking at? So people can know if they're travel or anything?
A hundred percent.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
For since we have classified and certified staff and even admin on there for the classified certified staff, would are we covering their subs? If it's a full day of their workday or are they we asking them to take the day off of work?
Uh, most districts pay for the subs.
Okay.
Sanya?
Yeah, I have a quick question, just a clarification question. So all these people, will they be talking like is it everyone like how we do on the seventh, we are going from morning till night and interviewing or each and everyone, are they going to be looking at the ones that we filtered after that interview? So that it won't be such a long process for them?
Yeah, correct, correct, correct. So let's let's go back to our hypothesis that there's three finalists. So the community stakeholders would interview three finalists.
Three finalists. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Are we good? Anything else on this topic? Hearing no comments. Shall we move on? Okay, the next two agenda items are are sort of revisit revisitations, if you will, from our last meeting where there were a couple topics that you asked me to do a little bit of research, particularly with your CFO with Mike, and I believe Mike is here. Yes, he is here. With respect to advertising and with respect to candidate travel reimbursements. So I'll tell you what I learned. And then I know if you have any questions for for Mike Schofield, I I know he'll be happy to answer. So the first one is on the advertising budget. If we could pull that up real quickly. Thank you, David. This is what I am going to recommend. If you'll just scroll a little to the bottom, I think there's a total figure at the bottom. Yeah. This is what I would recommend in terms of advertising. So and you might remember we chatted, I think about all of these last time. The first one ASA is it is it? That's that's one of the two premier sort of national getting it out in front of everybody, national boards. The National Science Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Those would be our three national web boards, if you will. Regionally, State to the North, we can post for free on their website. State to the South, we have to pay. Those are the equivalent of really in Oregon, the go to place for administrator jobs at school districts is COSA. So and join is where you go in California, Wassa, Washington actually has two or three, but certainly people are going to check the Wassa board if they're interested. So I think those are well worth it. And then locally, our Oregon Association of Latino Administrators has actually a a pretty prolific website, and I highly recommend that we post there. A WABZI is actually a fairly new affiliate, as I understand, and has not yet built a job board. So that's not really an option for us yet. All of those together, if my math is right, comes out to just under nineteen hundred bucks. So that would be my proposal for you. And I did check with Mike whether there is resources available for that. And he gave me the thumbs up. If there are no questions, I'll move to travel reimbursements. So also I checked in with Mike about this. Remember the question was, what do we do to make sure that folks are not spending lavishly on a trip to Beaverton if we ask them to come forward? I am I am proposing, I guess I wasn't really clear. So let me say that that the first interviews, that long day, I think I did say that. I did say that that long day in February is a virtual interview. I did because I said, we're going to have coffee and dinner. We're just going to do it all by ourselves on a on a screen. So there's no travel cost for that first interview. The community stakeholders are also a virtual interview. So the only actual time that I'm proposing, assuming that the health situation in our country allows it, is that those days in March would be in person interviews. So we are talking about let's say four at maximum, more likely three. And typically, at least one of those folks is within a drive. And we don't know who who's going to apply. But I think it's reasonable to assume that if there are four, at least one and maybe two are close enough that they're going to get in their car. So we are talking about one or two folks, probably, who might need to fly in, get a hotel for probably two nights, a car and airfare. What I'd like to propose is that the or ask is that the board be willing to reimburse without a dollar figure cap. But this document goes over the guidelines for candidates so that they recognize that. And again, most educators know this. I mean, most educators aren't going to be lavish, but just so that we're absolutely clear that we have some goalposts or or I forgot the term. You used a very eloquent term last time we met, something about the road. And anyway, some goalpost, let's call it that, so that folks are not spending more. And I think, for instance, you know, capping meal expenditures at forty five dollars a day, people can eat for forty five dollars a day. You know, and for the person that really wants to spend two hundred dollars at dinner and put it on Beaverton's tab, well, they're not going to be able to do that. So I'm hoping that this meets with your approval. And again, Mike is here. If you have any questions about the expenses there, but he did give me the green light that we can we can do this with pending your approval.
I I was the one that threw up a lot of the objections last time and and I've been reassured by by Mike that this is standard there and we certainly don't want anybody to think that we're nickeling and diming and we want to attract the the best candidates. So I I take away all of the things that I brought up last time. So thank you for circling back with that, Hank.
Absolutely.
Forty five dollars? What if they have a big appetite like me? They won't be able to live. Cards cartel, it's fine.
That's why you have the intel budget.
It's a little higher nowadays, but you used to be stingy. Okay.
Thanks, Andy. I think I like the the guy posted really common sense and they think they laid out nicely.
And I I appreciate Becky bringing up the fiscal part because we want to make sure that we're doing our our due diligence on that part. And I appreciate Mike Schofield looking through and this those pieces being addressed in this. Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to move to the next agenda topic, which is the one I'm super excited about. The insights from the focus groups and the online surveys. So Kathleen and Joy are here with me, as you know. They spent considerable energy and time getting to know your community really well. And the results of the results of the focus groups and the two surveys, well, they're twofold. One is to school us up. So we we know what we're talking about when we talk to candidates that we we understand as best as we can as outsiders, we understand Beaverton at this moment in time and your school district and the immediate context. And I think we ended up with forty five focus groups. A lot, highly informative, a lot of folks sharing. And I have great teammates, people share really candidly with Kathleen and Joy. So we we hear a lot and we hear people's desires and wishes and challenges and excitement and concerns. And that, so I said, there's there's two things. One is schools up, we we feel like we we we're part of it now. Secondly, is to create the ideal profile that we'll get to in a little bit where we are presenting to you, board, what we think we're hearing from your community in terms of what they want to focus on. Altogether, focus groups and two surveys and want to sort of walk you through. And I I believe I might have skipped an item. Did I Kathleen just sent me a message that I skipped number five? So I did, didn't I? Should we come back to that afterward? Yeah, for those of you who are following in the board bucket, I went from four to six. So we'll do six, then we'll come back to five, if that's okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, so let's is John Stich is going to be joining us momentarily. John was from CE is the author of the first servant. I want him to speak to the analytics. But what we'll do first is I'd like to talk about the Beaverton Superintendent Search Executive Leadership Summary, which is about a ten or eleven page narrative. And I don't know that it's necessary to open that up because it's 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 a long document. So I think what I'd like to ask is Kathleen, board members, hopefully you've had a chance to, if not read it, to at least peruse it. If you haven't fully read it, I do encourage you to. It's I think, among other things, not only a nice assessment of what what we see happening in Beaverton, it's I think it's a pretty compelling piece for candidates to review and see what this opportunity is and to see whether they fit or not. Kathleen, I'm gonna I'm gonna ask Kathleen if she'll she'll do an overview of what you'll find in that in that report in terms of what we found in Beaverton. So Kathleen, take it away.
Sure. Well, it's great to see everyone this evening and just want to say what a pleasure it was for me. And I'm sure Joy would agree with this, as would Robin. It was an absolute pleasure to facilitate the focus groups for your Beaverton stakeholders. People were incredibly engaged and very appreciative of the opportunity to to share their thinking with you and to help inform this search process. So I think because it is such a such a dense document, and I do hope you had a chance to review it, I'm intending to just keep it at a pretty high altitude overview. But if at any point you have a question about anything that I've shared or anything that's written in the document itself, please stop me and I'll try to to provide more context or more more details, depending upon what you need. So we had over three hundred participants in those forty five focus groups and you know, they all offered so much insight and wisdom. And I just was very impressed by the degree of attention that went into identifying who should be offered the opportunity to participate in a focus group. Students, it was the greatest student participation that I have ever experienced in my work with Hank on this part of the search process. And Beaverton students were so impressive, just eloquent and well spoken, passionate, knowing their own minds, wanting to to very much have a voice in this process. So I enjoyed that a great deal. I also just want to say so much thanks to Toshiko and Andrew, who ensured that we had the eight multilingual focus groups and that addressed eight different languages. And reading through the responses from those focus groups was just it was very affirming. There was so much of what was shared in the multilingual focus groups that aligned with what was shared overall. And but there also were some things that were really important to call out separately. And so I'll I'll want to touch on that when we talk about some of the strengths of the district. So I was struck and and I imagine Joy would affirm this as well by the fact that the top strength that was identified in virtually every single focus group was around the diversity of the district and the the Beaverton community. People see that as something that is just so enriching and something that really sets Beaverton apart. And we also believe it's something that will be very attractive to prospective applicants. So that was that was fabulous to hear. I think as a part of that, there were many, many focus group participants who wanted us to know that they see and appreciate the growing diversity and representation on the part of the school board. I think people feel very much supportive and excited to have greater representation on the school board and they are appreciative of the fact that that the board is committed to to the work of equity in particular. Students, you know, again, just great engagement from our students and we had students, we had BIPOC students, LGBTQ plus linguistically diverse, and some students experiencing disability and really to a group, to a person, the students reported feeling very supported by the staff and by the board and by district leadership. So that was wonderful to to hear that firsthand. I said the multilingual focus groups, you know, there were some very strong takeaways there and they expressed just how deeply they appreciate just all of the responsive services that are made available to them as parents and also to their children. They spoke about the translation and interpretation services. Shared that they have friends in neighboring districts and, you know, their friends really are envious that they have so much support in Beaverton and is something different than than what might be afforded in other districts. So that's kind of the biggest takeaway. And I know I spent a little bit of time on that, but I just felt that was so important for you to to hear. It was very just very clear to to us in our work with these groups. We also heard repeatedly that Beaverton has just a very kids first, student first staff that is willing to do whatever it takes to get students what they need in order to be successful. And so they there was some discussion about what that looks like. But beyond just that professional expertise, students and families reported seeing and and just really visibly experiencing that their students are cared for, that their students are supported and valued by the staff. We also heard from staff that, you know, by and large, they're really proud to work for Beaverton. It's a hard district to break into. And they know that and they feel proud to have obtained a position with the district. A number of staff also shared that they want their own children educated in Beaverton. And so that I've always always viewed that as kind of the highest compliment and form of confidence if your staff brings their children to your district to be educated. Students have tremendous options available to them. Those are electives just across a really broad spectrum. There are options programs that that are very noteworthy. There is tremendous support for arts opportunities for students. And there also is increasing focus on supporting students' mental health and social emotional needs. And the last aspect of that that we called out in the report is that the early learning program the last aspect of that, that we called out in the report is that the early learning programs that the district has made a tremendous investment in those early learning programs and there's a desire to see those things supported and, and sustained and grown even further. The community support is just remarkable. You have support from so very many quarters. Parents, businesses, nonprofits, and just the broader community. There was some, some discussion in our groups around the parent group supports that are available and just kind of wanted to call out specifically that there might be a little bit of disparity that is present between those groups ability to support enriching activities for kiddos in, in different schools. The district is perceived by the community as really well managed. And there is a recognition that there has been a lot of work to get, make sure that the district is fiscally responsible. There's a sense that the district is focused on the future when it comes to planning for facilities. And there's just a recognition that the community is, is in your corner and they're there to support the important work you're doing for students and that they very much, very much are happy to, happy to support. Strong parent engagement and effective communication practices. A number of people talked about how communication with parents and stakeholders, but primarily parents has really improved in Beaverton. And people acknowledge that that felt responsive, that, that the communication practices had improved in response to people expressing a desire to see that happen. There was also gratitude on the part of students that they find that the board and the current superintendent are accessible and the students are appreciative that they're asked for their input and that they're given opportunities to, to engage around issues that are important to them. I mentioned this previously, but the equity-focused, deeply committed and professional school board is something that is going to be super attractive as we talk to prospective candidates. So that was a strength that emerged as well. Some mention was made about innovation and exceptional practices in your, in your district office, in technology and nutrition services and transportation and finance. And I think some of those things became more apparent during the pandemic when families felt like they had access to those supports without a whole lot of bureaucratic red tape. So that was really important for, for us to share with you. And again, the multilingual focus groups, they just almost to a person, almost to a stakeholder that participated, expressed how much they appreciate the efforts that the district goes to, the lengths the district goes to, to be inclusive and to make sure that they're getting communication in, in the language of, of, in their native language and that they are have opportunities to, to make sure that they're expressing what their students need and district is responsive to that. So lots and lots and lots of strengths. And as I said, I think it's really going to help us, you know, create a lot of excitement and buzz amongst prospective candidates. So the other thing that we ask about when we're meeting with our focus groups is to talk to us a bit about initiatives that are coming around the bend or challenges that are present or perhaps that we need to make sure that the next superintendent is prepared to, to tackle. And so these were the things that kind of emerged as, as the most prominent. And as I said, every focus group identified diversity as, as the top strength. Related to that, the top challenge and the most urgent challenge that was identified was wanting to have a continued focus, a very tenacious courageous focus on equity and making sure that there's action. You know, there apparently has been a lot of work that's gone into the district's equity action plan and anti-bias, anti-racist work. And people expect the new superintendent and the board to work together to just really move, move that forward. I think it's also important to note that, you know, while every group identified equity as, as a primary issue to be focused on, there also is a small minority who acknowledged that there's pushback. And some of that pushback was even expressed in our focus groups where people would occasionally say, you know, we need to just be focused on instruction and get politics out of the classroom. And so I just, it's important to note that there is that tension that exists and there are those, you know, those, I guess, more vocal voices that probably are smaller in number. Beaverton students again are just very, very, very much engaged and wanting to be active in seeing that this, that the district's equity work is continues and they want, they want action. So I'm going to just breeze through the next ones here because I feel like I'm just taking up so much time. But staff, you know, everyone greatly appreciates all of the resources that have come to bear for supporting students' social, emotional learning needs and their mental health needs in the, in, in the schools. But staff is asking to be seen on that issue as well. They are feeling exhausted. There's some concern about people leaving the profession. And you know, there is a sense that while they're high quality, capable staff that are serving in the schools, they're, they're needing some TLC. So I wanted you to be aware of that as well. Staffing challenges and diversification of the workforce. People understand that, you know, I think it's, you know, 54% of Beaverton student body is comprised of students that are, you know, ethnically or racially or linguistically diverse. And the staff does not, does not reflect that to the degree that people would like it to. So some real emphasis and energy into diversifying the workforce and supporting the diverse staff that the district has so that you're better able to retain people. That was a challenge that really emerged as well. So a question we often get is about labor relations and what's the nature of that labor management relationship? And it sounds as though in the past, that relationship has been characterized as pretty collaborative and just solution oriented and, and local, I think, was a term that was used as in the issues that are brought to the table or ones that are, are relevant for Beaverton. And it sounds like that there have been, been some changes and there's maybe a little more tension in that relationship now than there might have been historically. And so it'll be important for the new superintendent to pay attention to that and to think about how to, how to navigate that. Academic and programmatic growth. So again, with all of the positive acknowledgement for the talented staff that you have, there also were stakeholders that were hoping to see further growth and improvement in the district's instructional program. And so some of the things that were called out were with respect to literacy, also SEL, and that was, you know, I think a desire to continue to focus on SEL and to understand that there are real staffing challenges. And so just being mindful of that and trying to, to navigate how to build staffing to address students' SEL and mental health needs. The dual language program, there was some, some sentiment expressed that the program could be even stronger at the, at the middle school level and that there'd be a desire to have dual language instruction available in more languages than Spanish. This one, you know, communications with your community and your parents was identified as a real top strength. At the same time, people are asking for even not more communication quantitatively, but what they're asking for is more, more of the information underpinning the decision. So what, what are the why behind the big decisions, especially those things that are maybe a little, a little more controversial? So some of the things that came up were just the need for greater transparency around, around boundary issues or allocation of resources between buildings. Those were some of the things that emerged in that area. And then finally, and this is one that, you know, it just is such a tug and a pull and attention, I think, that exists in so many places. Staff is wanting to have greater autonomy and acknowledgement for their professional expertise. They are asking for more meaningful involvement in the decisions that affect them. They reported sometimes that, you know, they're asked for their opinion, but then at the end of the day, sometimes the decisions didn't seem to reflect the input that they had offered. At the same time, parents and administrators and, and some other community stakeholders are seeing that there is a need for greater attention to strengthening academic programs and also just ensuring more equitable access and, and allocation of resources across buildings. So yeah. I, I, I hope that was detailed enough, but not too much. I'm wondering if you have any questions or if Joy, maybe if you have anything, you, you did a lot of the work with some of our student groups and I know how much you enjoyed that. If you have anything you want to offer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just then my husband pulls up on my doggy box. That's perfect. This is year 34 for me in education and I walked away from the focus groups and I was excited about Beaverton. Didn't know a lot about you prior to this, but your people represent you well. The parents, the staff members, the kids, they are proud about a lot of things at Beaverton. And that's exciting because that's not a given. So I was, I was struck by that. A couple of things, I'm just going to keep talking because Toby Ross is going to keep barking. Real strong sense of, of equity, real appreciation for the work that's being done. Some challenges, you know, but we, we're living in, in a time where we acknowledge that to be real. And so different groups had different perspectives as it related to where the district was in, in terms of their commitment to equity and what that would look like in terms of somebody coming on board, just wanting that person to be shored up and ready, recognizing that that was really going to be a challenge. Talked about board meetings, talked about differences of, of opinion in, in the community, differences of beliefs. And the more that COVID, you know, impacts this, we see that showing up in so many different ways. And so that was something that came up from our kids, interestingly enough, I think more so than our adults. But just also brought them in a very thoughtful way. They want somebody who's going to stay. They don't want anybody who's gonna come and, and use it as a stepping stone. They're looking to somebody who's relatively hands-on. They want somebody who has not just been in central office. That was clear across, you know, adults and kids. They want somebody who has an appreciation for the lifestyle of a teacher, of, you know, a department chair, somebody who has, didn't necessarily have to be in all positions. But they wanted somebody who they could relate to, had lots of good comments of current superintendent and things that were happening. And so really just looking for somebody relational who could understand, who could be there, show up and be a part of the community. I think the pride is the piece that, you know, really struck me more than anything else. The kids really talked about feeling safe with teachers. And you could tell that teachers were really committed to kids and going above and beyond, you know, what, what is expected and just doing what is needed. They are COVID exhausted, as we all are. And just really thankful to have had so many voices invited to the table. Because every time we came in, I said, you know, you are one of 45 groups. And they were like, really? And so they were, they were thankful that you were willing to take the time and make the investment to have so many varied voices. And they're excited about the process. So I'm excited for you. They represent you really well. They were a great group of people to engage with. So I thank you.
Thank you, Joy and Kathleen. Thank you both. Lugana, you have, looks like you have a question?
Thank you so much, Kathleen and Joy. Your presentation is very detailed. And that gives us a good understanding of what our members of our community really look, are looking for. So based on your presentation, it's very obvious that the people want a diversified workforce. And that said, I just want a reassurance that you're going to, in your search, that you're going to have access to a diverse pool of candidates. I don't think that I've been fully reassured on that. I just want a reassurance that when your search begins, you're going to access a diverse pool of candidates. Thank you.
Yes.
And I think that when we move the conversation towards talking about the ideal profile, I hope that you'll see that that concept is, is very prominent, both in terms of the characteristics that were identified and the qualities and the experiences that, that we believe the successful superintendent will need to bring to their work in Beaverton. So we, you can let us know when we review that document, if you still have concerns about that.
I'd like to welcome John Stich here now. We've, we've talked, Kathleen gave an overview, Joy as well, of the focus groups and the surveys as well and kind of an overview piece. But now we're going to dial into the, the surveys themselves. John and his group CE is the author of the first survey. And so David, if you would open up, there's, there's, it's attachment E1, it's the CE Executive Summary Analysis. And then I'll let John walk you through that.
So hello, I'm John Stich. Thanks for having me here this evening and being able to share what we were able to gather in the way of insights towards your superintendent search. Want to commend the board for all the work that you're doing and you have been doing. From, from my background, just so you know, I was the Canby superintendent that followed Jeff Rose and was in Canby for three years and then was across the river in the Vanquere as superintendent for several years before recently joining CE. The survey that we put together focuses on what are referred to as PESL or the Professional Standards for Educational Leadership. And it's research-based, looking at what, what elements need to be present within effective schools for those schools to be successful and meet the needs of their, of students. The survey itself, when you go into the overall report, you'll see that there's ways to break down the data and take a look at the different groups that took the survey. So there's disaggregations by certificated staff, administrators and supervisors, community members, classified or confidential staff, students and then parents and guardians. So you've, you've got to, you're able to see if there are different perspectives on each of these areas. Looking at those standards, we really look at it in two different ways. We asked the question in one way to find out what what, what does the individual want in the way of a superintendent? And we do that by allowing them to rank what they think are the top three areas of importance. Then the other section of the survey, we have a, a list of about 40 items that they go through and they rank the district on how strong the district is or how weak the district is in certain areas. So we're trying to get at both what do individuals want in a superintendent, but also what do they think the district needs in a superintendent to address critical needs within the district? So in the executive summary, you can see I boiled it down into some primary themes that emerged. In getting to those things, at the bottom of page one here, you'll see these rankings. And this is where we ask people to say, what are, you know, your top three of those 10 elements that need to come together for a school district to be successful? that need to come together for a school district to be successful? And you've heard in the focus groups, it came out loud and clear, equity and cultural responsiveness came out number two in the survey, definitely came out loud and clear in the focus groups. And it came out number two, but only behind curriculum and instruction and assessment. So in, in these areas, you've got the community and really a lot of staff and parents giving you responses. With forty nine percent of this being parents and guardians, twenty four percent students, you had a very good representation from your students and your parents with this survey. Telling you that these are some of the things that they think the, the superintendent needs to bring to the district. But on the flip side, what I provided in page two is that overview of how do, what are those items that came in when we scored the individual items? And put those to a, a mean score by providing point totals for each of the possible selections. And the main things that came up there of areas of, of strength for the district were number one, the number one strongest areas, equity and cultural responsiveness. They saw that as really a strength of the Beaverton School District. Another high strength was a community of care and support for students and that ethics and professional norm. So it's good to see that in the individual items, when people say, is a community strong in A, B, C, and D? These are the things that they're saying are the strengths of the Beaverton School District. On the other side, the districts that are viewed, is viewed the least positively, which would mean these would be priority areas for the new superintendent to address, exist in operations and management, curriculum, instruction and assessment, which was also the thing that they felt the superintendent needed to be strongest in overall, that they needed to bring to the district. And then also school improvement and professional community for teachers and staff. You might be asking operations and management, what does that really mean? It, it's not as much about just like maintenance and custodial and those types of things. It's about putting systems in place that people know how this, how the district functions as a whole. So that you don't have the view of the district as seen as pockets of schools in a general over, you know, overall umbrella of a district. But that you do, do really have a cohesive district that works together towards common goals, that your school improvement plans are connected to a district improvement plan, that the schools feel supported by the district. So I think that really fell into that theme of operations, management, curriculum, instruction, assessment and school improvement are seen as the areas that the district is really struggling in right now that potentially the new superintendent would need to address as high priorities coming in. Not, not meaning to say that the equity and cultural responsiveness and the common care and support for students or nurturing of staff, as you just heard, not to say that those aren't important, but those aren't the areas that people are feeling the district is lagging behind at this point in time. So what we try to do is really take a look, as I said, from the different perspectives of what do people want? And what do the people think are the district strengths and weaknesses that need to be addressed by the superintendent? And that's where I came up with those themes back on page one, really looking at the top, number one theme would be improving curriculum, instruction, assessment and effective interventions. Then followed that by creating that environment for collaboration and putting center at the students of all the decisions for learning and developing and maintaining high quality staffs or what we pulled from the survey as the key themes that the people that took the survey said they want in the next superintendent. I see Susan's got her hand up.
I just see the irony about autonomy, but yet we need to have a cohesive system. And they so often come into conflict. And I can tell you that as long as I've been on the school board and I've been on the school boards, I'm in my ninth year. Those have both been issues. So I, I, I especially find that extremely ironic and it's, I, I think as our, the size of our school district, it's difficult to do both. Well, honestly.
But, and I would say sometime, it is that loose type balance that you're trying to strike. And, and a leader's got to be able to say, these, this is the way that we want things done. But allow the flexibility for how you get those things done to be determined at the school level. And, you know, when I was a superintendent, I told my principals, you not only have the permission, you really have the mandate that if I make, I put a system in place that doesn't fit with your school, I need to know that, that you need an exception or we need to reassess that system and make that, make sure that it works for all the students in all the schools within the system. So if we need to modify the system to fit, that's acceptable. But part of this is making sure you have a system that's defined so that people have an understanding of some general expectations that flow through from kindergarten through twelfth grade or PK to college even for these students.
Thank you, John. We have one more piece of data that we're going to share. And John, if you would stick around just a bit, if you can, just in case there's questions, because we've heard about the focus group piece, we've heard sort of the combined piece. We've heard, heard what you've learned with the CE survey. I want to show one more in board. This one will be rather, rather quick. David, if you would show attachment E3, please. The board, you know that we did a, a couple of surveys. This survey, I'm just going to speak to, to the highlights that came out of the second survey. Scroll down just a little bit, you'll see that we had one thousand four hundred and eighty eight responses. We can't know whether some of those folks also took the CE. We assume that many did, but we don't know exactly how many were unique. But do notice that this was fifty percent of respondents were, were parents. So that's probably helpful to think about as you look through the data. What was, in this first chart, what personal qualities we'd like to see in the superintendent? David, can you scroll that, that down just a little bit more? And in this one, they were given a, a finite number to choose, although they were also able to identify others. The three that sort of tower above, so that just starting on the right, if you will, with that highest, the transparent piece is certainly a theme that we saw Kathleen spoke about it a bit in the focus groups. This notion of transparency, it's like, we don't always know why certain decisions get made. And again, I'm not presuming that's an easy thing to do in a large school district, right? But that is certainly something that folks felt that is an area that, that we could perhaps improve. And then the other two that were, that were high, relatively high, were the notion of collaboration, the collaborative spirit and notions around accountability. I would say that reading the text responses, accountability specifically around accountability of staff, not so much accountability with respect to achievement, although that was there too. But accountability makes sure folks are doing their work and doing their work well and operating at a high level of performance. If we could scroll down to the next chart. Leadership qualities that we'd like to see in the next superintendent. So these look like they're fairly equivalent, but I do want to call out the top three. And, you know, I, I would say one of the, one of the surprises in the survey for me was this question because efficient manager of resources and budget came out as the, as the top, which was not really a theme we heard tremendously in our focus groups, actually. So I didn't think that was going to rank as high, but it did. So that's important to recognize. The other two that are toward the top are equity focused, which given what you've already heard is not, should not surprising. And a proactive forward thinker, those were the three that, that, that rose to the top. And then moving down to the, to the last chart. What are the leadership qualities we were looking for or the communities looking for is probably I should say. Curriculum instruction, leadership to the top. Secondly, and this correlates to the question that what I just shared with you on the previous slide is experience with business operations of a school district came in second. So I think we do need to attend to that being an important, an important data point from both this chart and the previous chart. And the third one being experience with a racially and culturally diverse community. So that's just some of the highlights of the survey. Why don't I pause now? And, and just a spoiler alert, I said that we would talk about salary next, but I really think it would make way more sense for us to move into the ideal profile next, because there's a natural continuum between those two. So, so in preparation for looking at the ideal profile, any, any questions, thoughts, anything board members want to share? The next thing we're going to look at is how those all come together to form the criteria list. Becky?
I would just say my observation, Hank, was the, the differences is just simply because the second one was done much more by our parents and our students. And I think that they have a different outlook of what the responsibility is of a superintendent than our staff and our. So that's what my takeaway was, was just, just from the, the perspective of, of our parents and our students of what they think a superintendent is responsible for in our district.
Okay. So we've given, you, you've got a lot of input, a lot of data to reflect on. Let's move if we can to agenda attachment F. And let's move down. No, let's actually, no, I like where you started, David. I, I do want to read, I do want to read that second paragraph aloud because it's easy to just skip it because it looks like an introduction, which it is. But it does say something important, I think. So this section refers to the specific criteria that the consultant will use in identifying outstanding prospects for the position of superintendent of schools. It is also a document which the board will use in its deliberations in the select phase of the search. These characteristics emanate from feedback from the focus group and interviews and from the results of the two superintendent search surveys, including over three thousand comments made by stakeholders who engaged with either or both of the surveys. Distilling a list from so much input is both an art and a science, but ultimately must reflect the desires of the elected school board. I want to say that again, that this list is not intended to be a scientific list. It's a combination of art and science of your consultants seeing where the themes, the key themes are across these various data points. And reflecting what we believe is where the community is. But your role is to actually put your stamp on, because you are charged with making the hire. So it must ultimately reflect not just the community, but it must reflect the collective wisdom of the elected school board. To that end, we provide you this, these desired characteristics as a composite voice from your community, your stakeholders, your fellow board members, all of whom informed this document. And it's a draft for you to consider. So we are going to follow a little bit of a protocol to make this work over the next thirty minutes or so, forty five minutes, whatever you need. And if you would scroll down, Dave, so it, the, the blue loop heading is now at the top. See if we can squeeze, is it only my window that cuts off or can everybody else see that? Amazing. Okay. So I'm, I'm hoping you've had a chance to look at this already. I am going to read it. It's not that long, but I do want to read it. Because sometimes when you hear it, you think certain things. And the protocol that I'd like to use in the interest of moving this work through the work session into a document that at the end of our time together does reflect the wisdom and desires of the board, is that we'll approach this in three ways. The first time I'm going to read it through, I want to know if there is anything that you would cut from this list of bullet points. So the first time we'll read it through, it'll be, is there anything that doesn't reflect something you want or doesn't rise to a high level? Okay, we're going to do omitting or deleting first. Then, once we've deleted, if there's anything to delete, we'll ask for additions. Is there anything that isn't reflected that needs to be here on the, on the document? And the third thing we'll do is we'll edit what's already there to the extent that we need to. So we're going to start with things that we would remove, then potentially add, then potentially edit. So I want to just read through this document and while you're hearing and while you're reading it yourself, I want you to see if there's anything that you would strike. Not edit out, not edit, strike. Okay? So the Beaverton School District seeks an exceptional educational leader who is an equity centered leader with an established track record of advancing equity work in a complex organization. And who leads with courage and a tenacious commitment to shift outcomes for communities of students who have historically not been equal recipients of educational justice. Cultural competence and lived experience that reflects a broad understanding of the challenges of marginalized communities. An understanding of how to promote, support and sustain greater diversity in the workforce and particularly within teaching and leadership ranks. And a visionary and strategic leader who can build a collective vision for excellence in academics and instruction. And it has demonstrated sustained success in improving academic achievement. Who has experienced building and sustaining whole child education programs, including arts, dual language, CTE and early childhood programming. Who is unabashedly focused on student wellbeing and has evolved wraparound services and programs for social emotional learning and mental health. Passionately and consistently puts students first when making decisions. Holds self and others accountable for ensuring that every student is well served. Effectively manages large systems and competing stakeholder needs. Prudently oversees resources and budgets. Models humility, integrity and trustworthiness and inspires joy, hope and a sense of belonging among students, staff, families and the greater community. And a strong communicator who clearly and transparently communicates the why to diverse stakeholders. Operates with a mindset around effective and open two-way communication. Creates systems for inclusive decision-making with all groups at all levels, engages deeply with students, parents, staff, labor partners and the community. Listens especially to voices often unheard and elevates their input. And has demonstrated political acumen and legislative advocacy. Board, is there anything in here that should be struck?
All right. I personally don't see anything that I would want to take out.
You know?
I'm feeling the same way, to be honest with you. I think it's captured a lot of what we had during our first session very nicely.
Very well put together. It's good.
I saw Eric nod. What about?
I agree.
Lugana? Okay.
I agree.
Becky?
Very comprehensive. Good job.
Is there anything missing? Is there anything that you would want to add? That can be a theme or a sentence or a bullet point. Is there anything that isn't there that should be there?
There are two pieces that I, I think of two words that I would put in and I kind of see one of them kind of represented there and ones being an ethical leader and then that fiscal responsibility is the other piece that I don't see. And I know we've talked about it and I've seen it in different places in the other documents.
The fiscal piece in particular, right Karen? The fiscal piece? And what about, do you, do you, do you, just, just to be clear, do you not see it in the prudently oversees resources and budgets? The second to last bullet point under vision and strategy, strategic leader?
Which one do you see it in, you said?
So if you, the second section visionary and strategic leader, the second to last bullet point. Effectively manages large systems and competing stakeholder needs, prudently oversees resources and budget. So I'm, I'm curious if, is that still missing there? Do we need to?
I think it's more. I'm, I'm used to an education seeing the word fiscal responsibility.
Okay.
And this is kind of worded more in like community voice, which is great. And then the piece of being an ethical leader is mentioned also, but not named.
Thank you.
I do have to note that this seems to kind of represent when we go through and evaluate our current superintendent. The points there very much lend to. So I find it fascinating. So I find it fascinating, you know, that this really does represent what our school board has looked for for years in a superintendent. Follows the strategic plan quite nicely, too.
Maybe this is more for the edit section, but I keep thinking about Karen's language around fiscal responsibility and wondering if you could have something like prudently oversees resources, provides fiscally responsible oversight of budgets.
Let's stay if we can just for a minute with anything else. So Karen has indicated a couple of things that maybe are missing. We'll come back to Tom's. I appreciate that, Tom. You're thinking about how to weave that back in. Is there anything else that's not there that should be there?
I'm trying to, I am, and I'm, I'm trying to look for the right succinct way to say this, but someone that we, we value, we put our money, we invest our money in our values. Because when there are budgetary decisions that have to be made, we always need to go back to what it is that we, that we value. But I'm, I'm not sure if, if that's not reflected in.
Maybe setting priorities in, in spending.
But sometimes we make trade-offs and we invest in those things that, whether it be a new, new initiative or to bolster an existing initiative, but it's that we clearly reflect what are, what we value as a board, as a community, as a staff.
I see Tom's comment that's helpful. Aligns district budgets and values.
We put it, if we're making an edit in, I think we're moving into the edit section, it sounds like, that sec, that bullet point that the prudently one, maybe there's a place to add both, both Karen's recommendation around fiscal, but also Eric's, I'm sorry, Tom's. What's in Tom's chat box, the Alliance District Budgets and Values? Maybe they can both go in there? Tom's on a roll.
Yeah, I'm just going doing the editing.
Thank you, Tom. That, do you want to reflect on Tom's comment in the text, in the chat box?
It helps if I can type it because then it. And I'm trying to get it so you don't lose a line because I know you want to get this on one page. So that's the other thing I'm thinking about.
I think we have to read those out loud so that everybody can see them in case. So I think the first one was, do you want to do that, Hank? Or do you want me to do that?
I would love if you would do that, Karen. That would be great.
So Tom had put in aligned district budget and values. And then there was the second one, prudently oversees resources, aligns budgets and values, provides fiscally responsible oversight on budgets. And then Kathleen put in ensures budget is reflective of district's values and priorities.
I actually like Kathleen's because it's really succinct. But spells it out.
Trying to get that word fiscally responsible. But you could always, with the semi-colon, you could always add, you know, ensures budget is reflective of district's values and priorities, semi-colon, provides fiscally responsible oversight of budgets. I think you could jettison the prudently overseas resources because you've already said it in the other two. Like I could type that in there too, if that helps.
Is there, oh, when we finish that thought, I have another thought.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a reason we have this moment of silence?
I was just about to interrupt the silence. Kathleen, do you want to, Kathleen or Tom, or both, do you want to read where you think we are heading toward with this?
Well, I took what Kathleen wrote that folks liked, and then I added in the fiscally responsible piece so we could keep that and then jettison the prudently overseas resources because it would be redundant. And what you get from that combination of things is ensures budget is reflective of district's values and priorities, semi-colon, provides fiscally responsible oversight of budgets.
That being the totality of that bullet point, yes?
That would be the totality of the bullet point, yeah.
Okay.
And Tom, I was madly trying to type while you were speaking. Would you mind just making sure you pass that on to, to me in an email or paste it into the chat and I'll copy it?
It's, it's in the chat. It's the latest thing I put in there.
Great, thank you.
Board, are we okay with that bullet point now as it is? Karen, I can't see you, but since you raised that.
I'm nodding yes.
Okay.
Let's say Becky's hands up.
Becky's hands up.
I, I was just, I, I was, I keep looking at the words here, are, is there, I'm trying to go by what are, what were the priorities and those three top things and make sure that they've been captured all in here somewhere. So accountable, and I do see the word accountable under strategic leader.
Yep.
Um, but I'm trying to figure out, are we accountable for the, are we asking them to be accountable for the correct thing that our community and our parents and our students were looking for?
My, so my take on it, I'm just one person, my take on it was that the accountability was around performance. Performance of, sometimes people would call out, you know, whatever. Would call out specific performance, if you will. And so that was the, that was sort of the impetus for, but you know, an ethical and a person of integrity is going to hold themselves to the high level of accountability before they start holding other people's to levels of accountability, right? So that was the genesis for that statement. That said, that might not, that might not reflect, Becky, where, where you want to see accountability. So say more about that if you would.
I'm just thinking our community expects our superintendent, working with a board, to be accountable for the success of students while they are with us. I mean, we, we want them to have success, to be accountable that they, that they are able to learn the things that they need to learn to be successful once they leave us. And I just think that the superintendent is the CEO of that and, and that our community is asking us to be accountable for that outcome.
Yeah.
I like the word well-served in that sentence because I think it extends beyond just academic achievement to ensuring that our kids are like safe at school and that they're taken care of in, in a broader sense. But I wonder if you could add every student is well-served and achieves academically or something like that to get.
And, and you know what? Now that I look, maybe it's in the very first bullet point under vision. A vision for excellence in academics and instruction who has demonstrated sustained success in improving academic achievement.
I, I, I think what Tom was saying, that's true, Becky, that's great. I, I like that first bullet point too. But I think the safety in school point needs to be brought up too because a lot of parents and students are not feeling safe. So maybe something where the superintendent could be put or feel accountable that he needs to make sure that the kids are safe also in school. Safety, safety point is also brought up there somewhere.
My ear tripped on the word well-served or the words, I should say, because I was like, that doesn't sound like an education word. And then the more I thought about it, I was like, but it's such a nice umbrella for the number of things that they need to provide for our students.
Safety and success. Kathleen just put in something there. Accountable for well-being, safety, and success of all students. Academic success or just success?
Like that.
I think success covers both academic success and any other area that you think that kids would need success.
And academic part is bullet number one and the visionary strategic leader. Because we know that that's the core is that they are instruction, you know, that piece.
Yeah, we can maybe add success, that's fine.
In, in some ways, I guess more philosophically, academic success can be a stand-in for success later in life or success in career, accessing quality of life, things like that. So I like the broader umbrella there. I like what Ugana was saying.
So who wants to call out what the sentence currently looks like based on the, this most recent conversation?
I think what Kathleen has put there is good account, as far as I'm concerned, accountable for well-being, safety, and success of all students. That sounds good to me.
I'm seeing nods from some board members. And just to be clear, that goes, that is part of that fourth bullet point under number two. So I'm going to read it. I'm going to read what I think is the bullet point based on what Sinidi just said. Passionately consistently puts students first when making decisions, holds self and others accountable for the well-being, safety, and success of all students. Yes? Okay. If we're good with that, I want to, I want to go back. Karen had mentioned integrity, which does get played somewhere, but I think if I can try and paraphrase or repeat what I think I heard, Karen, that it didn't maybe have enough prominence in this document.
Yes.
And is there, do you have a recommendation of where to insert that, or should we put our heads together around that?
Probably put our heads around. I think that that's one of those pieces that over the years, it's been a pride of the work that the board in the, our community has asked for and, and searched for. So I'm not, I think it would be great to have it.
Okay.
On it.
I sometimes think about where things come in the document at what point, and if something comes towards the beginning of the document, that actually has like a strong signal to somebody applying. So I wonder courage, integrity, and a tenacious commitment. Because then it's like right there at the beginning of the three sections.
But then isn't it coming more under equity centered rather than?
Who would need to be reinforced elsewhere, I think.
You know, the thing is with so many of these words here, we could all have maybe a different perspective exactly what that word means as well as our community and our words like humility, integrity, trustworthiness. Those are all, you know, words of character, words of.
If you have integrity in the top third, and then it comes back again in the visionary and strategic leader, then that's twice. Because it says models humility, integrity, and trustworthiness. And if you go courage and integrity.
Can I interject something without getting in trouble for this? Are we too focused on this particular document? Like, it says a lot of what we want and we know whoever the candidate is going to read it and they're going to get what our message is and I don't want to be the naysayer here, but I'm just asking the question.
Think you just got yourself in trouble.
I know, I just, you know.
No, I just, I mean, it's our, our top priority, our top
Of course.
jobs is to make sure that we get a superintendent that best meets the needs of our community and our.
And I, and I, and my, my point being, I, I really do feel like this document's speaking to that. And what we're looking at is like fine tuning it, and I get the fine tuning, but I mean, I, I, I do think that this document is speaking to what our community wants, what our students want. You know, but again, I'm one voice among, among seven.
I appreciate that.
You're not one voice, you have two voices now. Dito, I agree.
My question is then, board members, because once we're done tonight, at this point Hank's going to take it from there. We're not going back for further edits, right? This is in order to keep our timeline. Are other folks comfortable then moving forward with what we have, or do we want to spend a little bit more time?
The, the only piece that I didn't see, and I don't know if it's something that we can add here or not, is a piece of, you know, it would be great to have a superintendent that's representative of our student body that brings in that diverse, that versity, maybe possibly multilingual. I don't know if that is, this is, would be an appropriate place to make a statement about that. I don't know if we can actually put that into a document or if it's something that we're just as a team or.
Karen, so I'm going to disagree that I think it's in lived experience, cultural competence and lived experience. To me, represents that, but if it's not enough, then, you know, I.
One other thing is that, and maybe Susan Rodriguez, who is on this call with, or on Zoom with us, can speak to it. The HR department is working on a statement for postings that basically says we encourage diverse candidates to apply. And it's, you know, there's, there have been a couple of emails back and forth about that. The city of Portland with their job postings has something similar and we're kind of looking at that language. It was suggested to us from members of the Black Parent Union. And Susan, I don't know where you're, you're at with that, but I know that that might be something that isn't necessarily a part of the primary text of this document, but would be attached to it when it goes out.
Yeah, hi, Tom. Thank you. Yeah, I connected with Hank a little bit on that. And, and we're, you know, the posting is being done through the, the firm, but we're, we're working together and supporting on that.
Do you guys have a statement or a close to a statement that would be go out with this?
Well, I, I've been working on some things, but I, I want to, I don't want to speak for Hank. I think, you know, we need to just connect a little bit more about that, where we are with the posting for this particular position.
Portland language is very impressive. I mean, I, I, I think what you're going to see it might look somewhat like that because it's actually very well done and it's really not Portland specific. It's about what, what everybody should be really looking for in terms of leadership and in terms of attracting diverse folks. what everybody should be really looking for in terms of leadership and in terms of attracting diverse folks to come and apply and to be welcomed into the, into the role.
Thanks for helping with that, Tom, and suggesting it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So if I understand, maybe that's something that before this gets posted, maybe the board can be made aware of whatever statement you guys add to it.
Yeah, oh, for sure, for sure.
Okay. Yeah. And thank you guys for, for looking into that. Much, much appreciated.
So I sensed that maybe we're moving toward the end of this, but I, I'd like to, can we, can we finish our thought on the integrity word being yay or nay, being inserted into that first bullet point, courage? How did you say that, Tom?
Oh, courage, integrity and a tenacious commitment. And then it would be reinforced on the final bullet point of the second section.
Are we good with that, board? Are we not good with that? Are we comfortable with that?
It's fine. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
I just want to thank everybody for coming to the initial startup of the MFA program for our school district here. Workshopping with us tonight.
Great. We appreciate you. So we are, so the board has given us direction of what this looks like. Once we clean it up, we will, we're going to use it as our marching orders because we're going to, we're going to actually start the search next week. But we will also get a clean copy to the board and it makes sense to put that in your consent agenda. Next time you have one, so you actually see the actual product. Sound good?
So is this, I mean, again, it's, it's a, it's a vision statement for us of what we're looking for in a superintendent, but it is not a wish list that we're going down. And if you have not, if you're in a district that does not have dual language, you are automatically disqualified from, right? I mean, it's.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, I forgot how you stated initially. We would, we, we want to have a candidate that hits as many of these as possible. And if they're missing one particular piece, particularly if it's an experiential side, like we don't want to hire someone without integrity, that would probably be a showstopper. But right, if they don't have one particular piece that's more programmatic, that's not a showstopper.
And, and Hank, how many people show up at an interview and tell you right off the bat that they do not have integrity?
Zero, Becky.
Yeah, yeah. Same thing, you know, humility. Let me tell you how humble I am.
Right. But, but to be fair, I mean, this does drive the interview questions also, and this does drive the conversations. And so, right? Yep.
Yep.
Ugana, you have your hand up.
Yes. So my question is, when we talk about the experience side, do we have a number of years of experience that we are looking at for our potential candidates?
We don't. I don't know that we would want to put a number in there. I think the, in my opinion, would be the, the softness of that language. To me, that means like not a total rookie, but whether that's, you know, five years as a soup or 20 years in the district office and one year as a soup. I think I'd like to keep it vague enough that we can see how that informs the candidate's application and make the decision accordingly.
So basically, candidates that we're looking to attract could be from any walk of life?
You mean beyond the educational zone?
Yes.
Well, that I think we would be hard pressed to, because I think this document as it reads, I mean, I, I, I don't, I'm curious if other board members read it differently, but as I read this document and I look at visionary strategic leader and collective vision for excellence in academics instructions, like that to me speaks to education. Now, we did say that one, missing one bullet point isn't the end of the world, but then I go to the next bullet point. It's about dual language, CTE, early childhood programming, social emotional learning. I think that this document to me suggests it's an educator. I, I don't know if other board members see it differently. I see Karen nodding yes.
So I like the fact that you're not putting a number on the experience because in my experience, I've come to realize that a lack of experience doesn't necessarily mean lack of skills. So I appreciate the fact that you're not putting in a number. I'm just curious as to where we're drawing our pull from. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Good question.
Because I just, you know, I always like to think about, you know, Portland and Guadalupe. I don't think he came as a superintendent or had the superintendent experience and, you know. So I like that this, you know, reflects, you know, so much in that we can be broader in our search too.
Great.
I think Guadalupe actually had a bunch of, had superintendent experience.
I thought he was a deputy superintendent, but you know, I was just thinking.
And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and all of the, the thought. And I agree, like if there's something that they don't have experience with, that's one bullet, then that's, you know, something that we would consider because there's an overall picture of what we're considering. I would say that dual language programs are things that are pretty common, like Washington state has it in all of their schools now by a certain year in a few years. So it, it actually is more common to have that experience and not, but it's not something that would rule somebody out or not having CTE, but those are common now more so in, in, in most districts.
Okay. Anything else on this before we move to our, I believe our last agenda item of the evening? Okay, wonderful. Great. Let's go back to the item, item five, please. And thank you, board. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberation on, on this document. David, if you're there, can you put up five, attachment D, and if not, I will. Hey, thank you so much. So this last part of our discussion tonight is about superintendent salary. You are not making decisions tonight. The purpose of, the purpose of tonight of this topic is twofold. One is for board members to get a sense of what the market is, because at some point in the not-too-distant future, you're going to need to approve a contract on a new superintendent. So it's, it's good fodder for that. Probably just as importantly and relatedly is that Kathleen, Joy, Robin and I, when we talk to candidates, we need to have some, some degree of understanding of where the board might land in terms of a compensation package. So we're not asking you to set a range and, and take action and say, this is the compensation range. We're not asking for that, but we really just want to have you engage in a bit of a conversation, which will, we will listen to and attend to. And then when a candidate is talking about, you know, what, what their, their salary or compensation needs, we can at least, we can at least reflect the general feeling of the seven board members. Recognizing that at the end of the day, you are not being hamstrung by tonight's conversation at all. Okay. So this is just, this is just casual chat with the Beaverton School Board. I want to outline what you're looking at. And then ask you, I'd like to outline what you're looking at and make an initial sort of thought about what I think might be sort of the area where you'd land and then have, have the board engage with each other. So you're looking at kind of three sections. I've looked at districts that are in our, I would call in our immediate locality that are, I'm going to say similar to Beaverton and similar to me means kind of two things. One is within, let me, let me, let me start a different way. So maybe not surprisingly, there's, there's two key factors that go into, to sit, into how much a school district will pay a superintendent. One is there are regional differences. Superintendents in Washington state just make more than in Oregon because of whatever their funding situation. There are other states that are more like it, like us. So regional makes a big difference, but also super important, no surprise to you, is the size of district. Beaverton's superintendent is not going to be paid on par with Corbett's superintendent, right? So those are two, two factors. And then thirdly, which is a little more ineffable is there are districts that maybe just feel a little Beaverton-ish and sometimes we can't even describe exactly why that is. So you might see the very bottom of the page, Boulder Valley. Feels a little Beaverton-y to me, but don't ask me to tell you exactly why. I mean, it's outside of a metropolitan area. It's a highly educated community. Those are some of the things that come into my mind when I think about, and the district size is not all that different. So those are, those are how some of these districts sort of came onto this page. Let's look, let's focus on the top and I'll just walk you through what you're looking at. So in the top one, as you've seen, these are what I would say are immediate vicinity from Salem up to Clark County. And these are kind of the larger districts that you'd find in those areas. Salem, Portland, Beaverton, Vancouver and Evergreen. Vancouver and Evergreen are both in Clark County, Washington. Looking across, you see that some of those are updated for the current year and some of them we don't have current year data for, so we have the most recent data. So four of those districts reflect current year. Salary slash PERS adjusted salary, you probably all know that in Oregon anyway, sometimes PERS is included in the salary, sometimes it's not. So when we want to do apples to apples, we have to adjust the salary based on whether the district pays PERS or not. So what you're looking at is in that column under salary slash PERS adjusted salary, you're looking at the, that's salary, PERS adjusted or not, that's salary. In Evergreen, you're seeing actually two different salaries and you'll read the comment to the right and that will explain why. In addition to salary, as, as probably many or all of you know, there are often other parts of the superintendent compensation that we want to think about. And some are de minimis and we don't really spend a lot of time on. A de minimis example is most districts will give a few hundred dollars a month for cell phone for a superintendent. It's not worth it to try to figure that out. It's a fairly small part of their package. But a fairly large or, well, relatively important part of the package is that a lot of superintendents do receive a TSA or a tax sheltered annuity contribution in addition to the PERS contributions. And so while that's not salary, that is, that's an important part of compensation to think about. Where you see a TSA listed, that means that's their TSA. Where you see blank, it doesn't mean they don't have a TSA. It means I could not verify whether they have a TSA or not. Just know that. So if you look at Beaverton and you look at the dollar figure under salary and then you add the TSA, that is what I'm going to argue is their overall compensation. It's not exact, because as I said, there's some de minimis other pieces that also get added sometimes. And sometimes they're not even that de minimis, but because they're, they fall into different categories. I think this is a good place for us to, to land here. So top category is I-5 to Clark County. Second category is like districts or somewhat like districts in other parts of the Northwest, basically meaning Washington, because in Oregon, there's really only three districts of comparable size, Beaverton, Portland, Salem Kaiser. Other than that, you get pretty small. But there are districts in Washington state that are somewhat similar on, you know, whether in terms of student size or what have you. And then I looked at districts in other parts of the country. You're, you're doing a national search. You're looking to attract folks from other parts of the country and you, you probably don't want to be under market so that somebody might want to come to Beaverton, but they're getting paid way more. So this is a kind of a random sampling of districts that either are, well, most of them are pretty close in size to Beaverton or have some thing that gave me a sense that they would be like kind of districts. And, you know, you might look at them and say, yes, no, Savannah, Chatham, maybe not as much a like kind of a district. But I did want to pull something from the Southeast just to give you a sense of what a comparably sized school district might pay. Questions about what you're seeing? Susan?
It's just a question in terms of, and I don't know if you have the answer to this, and maybe I'm going into minutia. You know, I mean, because if any of these salaries, you know, if they're like newer superintendents or if they're, you know, been there for a few years, because, you know, are they starting salaries or they mid salaries or they ending salaries?
I can, I can do that with most of the first two category, first two blocks. I, I don't think I can do it very well at the bottom block. But maybe a little bit. Beaverton, you know, she's the superintendent of Beaverton. Portland is Guadalupe Guerrero. I believe he's starting year number five. This is his first superintendency. Salem Kaiser is Christie Perry. She's been there. I'm going to, I, I won't have exact numbers, but I would say she's been there five years. It's her second superintendency. Vancouver, Washington is, they grew Washington is a new superintendent, new to Vancouver. However, he was in Canis for a handful of years. I couldn't tell you exactly when. So it's, it's at least his second superintendency. Evergreen is Mike Merlino. He's been there. I'm going to guess three or four years as a superintendent and was a COO in the same district prior to that. Lake Washington's superintendent, he is now in year three. Joy would know. I believe he's in year three, formerly deputy superintendent of Lake Washington. Spokane is a first-time superintendent. He is in year number two. Formerly the chief academic officer in Spokane and Tacoma. I'm not sure. Tacoma is either a long time retired or first year. I can't remember if they've made their hire yet or not. So Tacoma, I'm, I'm not sure about.
Christie got hired, Christie Perry got hired a year after Dawn. And she came from Perry Dale, which of course was, is very, very tiny.
Dallas, actually Dallas.
Dallas, but I think she was at Perry Dale before she was at Dallas.
So maybe.
Yeah, maybe she was the prince. No, I thought she was the superintendent, but anyway. I mean, she, she negotiated a new salary, but because she was, was brand new and it was such a, a different, she negotiated after Dawn got, because there was a huge discrepancy, huge discrepancy.
Between hers and Dawn's?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So Beaverton has, you know, this is not only true at the superintendent level. I mean, Beaverton has committed to paying its staff well and it's a source of pride as it should be in the community and among staff. So, and that's, you know, that's true at the superintendent level. I mean, I often am working with Oregon school districts and saying we are way below where we are nationally and you're, you're, you're actually in a good place nationally. So I would be recommending, and I, really it's, it's your pocketbook. So I'm, I'm mindful that I'm talking about somebody else's pocketbook right now, but I would say that somewhere in the 330 to 360 range is where you would probably want to land for someone who is a seasoned superintendent. Maybe slightly less for somebody that's never been a superintendent before. That's my thinking about it and I, you know, really it's about the board, you know, sharing their thoughts. And again, you're not taking action or trying to convince each other right now, but I, I'd like to open it up to just hear where board members are. Either questions for me or thoughts that you have looking at this data.
So Hank, when you're saying that amount, are you saying a whole picture or are you, I mean, like with benefits and everything, or are you saying like we start at 330 as a base?
So I'm, so good question, Susan. I'm thinking salary plus tax sheltered annuity. And then sometimes there are some other pieces. I don't mean the really small pieces that, you know, you might have a longevity payment. You're starting to see folks do that. If someone sticks around for five years, they get X number of dollars. Folks who are moving to Beaverton, if your superintendent doesn't already live in the immediate vicinity, there's going to be, you know, you might put some of that money into travel, moving expenses and so forth. So there's ways to come up with that. So total comp, I, I would take out the two things that I don't include in total comp is, is health benefits, because those are usually the exact same thing other administrators get. And PERS is obviously standardized in our state. It's a percentage of, of income.
Hank, you have Sunita with her hand up and Susan with her hand up.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Yeah. So when you do the listing, you're going to give a range of salary or no?
Not, I'm actually not. I don't, I don't prefer to do that. So this comes up when I'm having conversations with candidates.
Yeah. So, so I'm kind of, because what you have up here, it's about 315, 16,000 for Beaverton. And you're saying you're going to, you're saying we, we should start at 330 to 360, thinking that we will be hiding from somewhere outside where that person would be making more and that's why.
I think so, yes. And this will be next years versus current years, what you're seeing right there. And it's a tough market. So that's where I would, I would go, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, also, yeah, as a base. What you don't want is you don't want your base, even if your cap is sort of high, you don't want your base to be so low that it makes people think that they're going to end up, you know.
So when, when you said base, you're saying 330.
So when, when you said base, you're saying 330 would be the salary, like, like right now it's 287, you're saying 330? Or you're saying 330 would be 287 plus the 28?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so 300, kind of 300 plus 30 type of something. Okay, thank you.
And like, things like the TSA and stuff, those were, those were all Eric and, those were all negotiated after we hired, you know, though, that was, there was a back and forth thing. But there was, there was moving expenses and then it ended up that, that you had to use them in a certain amount of time. And Dawn didn't use that. So I mean, so there's, there's some given, there's some give and take. And that they could come up with something, but most of the time, whether the PERS is included or the, but, but Hank, you don't advertise it anywhere. It's only the people that you actually talk to that you give them the, the range?
Here's the thing, if I advertise it in a posting, then I feel like I'm committing the board to that specific. It's, it's like, you, you have to fall into that. If I'm saying on the job posting that it's, let's say, 320 to 360, then you look bad if you end up not there. And so really, yeah, I don't, I don't post it. And when I'm talking to candidate, particularly candidates who are meeting a threshold and we're starting to have a conversation, like, they might really apply. They're, they're going to say, well, what do you, what do you think the Beaver, what, you know, I'm currently making X number of dollars. What do you think Beaverton's going to pay? And I'm going to say, this is, this is the general sense of where I get from the Beaverton Board. Is it's probably going to land somewhere between here and there. I don't specifically say it's going to be this dollar figure and this TSA. Like, that's your job when you negotiate the contract. I want to just be able to give them an overview of general expectations. If they're making 375 somewhere, then, you know, they might hear that you're between wherever you are, then people like, look, and, and that's reasonable and fair, right? Like, they might decide they're making too much money to apply for it. So that's where it comes up. But I don't really, I don't want to post a range because that really hamstrings you to have to be in that range.
Oh, well, for, okay, so for our purposes of what we're doing right now, Hank, I just want to understand this. And then is, I mean, because depending on the candidate, right? Is depending on where we would kind of go with the salary.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So because we're going to negotiate, as Becky pointed out, what the actual salary was going to do. So I was going to say, and I'm not putting it in my brain, I'm not thinking the TSA.
Okay.
TSA part of this, I'm just thinking, looking at the list of salaries, you know, in terms of what the salary slash PERS is, you know, and looking at like Vancouver at 275 and like Portland at 312. And then kind of going into like Tacoma, because I kind of think of Tacoma like Portland, even though I know it's kind of in the Seattle area. I mean, I would do the bottom, this is just me, at 275 for the low. And again, this is just not including the TSA.
Your salary, yeah.
Right. And then go up to like 325. So that would be the range, depending on like how amazing this person is. And like, you know, how we really, you know, feel, because as we point out, this is just kind of where we're thinking in terms of like, what we're willing to put out there for a superintendent range to recommend. It's not like, okay, this is the done, this is what the salary is going to be because that's negotiated.
For me, I want to stay open because we could potentially get a candidate who maybe even did a larger district than ours or was coming from somewhere else. And I want to be able to attract that kind of talent if we need to. And I also think it's important too, because I want us to have that national reach so that we can get diverse candidates. That's incredibly important to me. And so, you know, obviously at the end, there's a negotiation that goes on and I think, you know, we'll do that and we'll do that well. But I, I want to make sure that we've got enough out there that we're able to attract people who maybe they're stepping down from a very large district. Maybe they're in a district of 100,000 kids and that they want to end their career in Beaverton, you know. I, you know, and they have some experience with very complicated systems or something like that. Wouldn't want to preclude that kind of a candidate.
I think like my feel is like, yeah, we don't want to hamstring us and not be competitive. So, you know, Hank, if you think that's the range, like 330, 360, I don't think it's, you know, irresponsible initially. Like you said, I think it is a hard market. I think right now, like, I think, like you said, there, there's inflation everywhere. If Donald's doing this now, I can imagine when Donald did it before, we actually had the negotiating. He was the superintendent of the year. He was really amazing. So he had leverage. Get us now would be really hard. We have to chase and we won't want to lose a candidate like that. So we have to be willing as a board to like, go above Portland, in my opinion, probably at this point. So, you know, though, but I mean, I want to make sure you have the latitude to, to get the best. That's how I feel.
I, I also take into account some of these other areas. I mean, I, you should pay someone for what they're worth. But I also think that most of us in the job market were paid, I mean, the cost of living in some of these places is a lot more than they are in Portland, even though Portland has gone up, the Portland, the greater Portland area has gone up a lot lately, housing. And, you know, gas, groceries, all those kind of, all those kind of things. And that's why you have cost of living raises. And, you know, this, this doesn't stay their salary forever when they're here. It's just a, is how they, they, they start off. So when I look at places like Lake Washington or San Diego, I, I just think of their cost of living as being higher than ours is here in Portland, in the Beaverton area. But I, I, my feeling is, I would think, Hank, if you're going to be talking to folks and your team's going to be talking to folks, you know, I would be really open to the fact that we at least start with what Dawn is ending with in that low 300 range. And again, it would, it would totally depend on their experience and it would depend, you know, but I, I would say we would, would not go backwards in any sort of way that the next person we think is going to be less than what our current superintendent, just because of what the job market is right now.
And I'd want us to be sensitive to pay equity issues too, if we end up hiring a female superintendent or superintendent of color that we're not in any way, you know, following with, what a lot of the statistics show where folks get underpaid.
Good point.
This was very helpful, Hank. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you. And really, that's what I need is just sort of your senses. Any other board members want to offer any thoughts and then we'll, we'll call it good?
I'm in line with what has been mentioned with respect to pay and equity, looking at competitive, you know, that within the range that you mentioned and looking at other factors as well, so.
Thanks, Hank.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate you leading us through this tonight. I want to make sure there was an omission that I made at the beginning of the board meeting when I was thanking our communications and community involvement folks. And I apologize for this omission, but I forgot to mention our folks in the multilingual department who did such an awesome job with those focus groups. So thank you, Toshiko, and thank you to everybody from that department who helps support our outreach work. And want to make sure you guys get recognized for the awesome work that you're doing. And I, I think with that, you know, we appreciate your work, Hank. We're looking forward to getting this posted. I'm going to be like a little kid, you know, waiting to see what we get in our email box when it comes time to the candidates. And probably a little tired once I'm done reading through all of those different resumes, maybe a little beleaguered by the end. But hopefully, we're going to find some really great folks and I'm excited to take the next step and, and find our next superintendent. So with that, we look forward to hearing more from you in the new year.
We look forward to it too. Great.
Adjourn our, our board work session is adjourned for the night.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Good night.